All right, beans. Being seven o'clock, I'd like to call the order of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Charleston's Board of Meeting. First up, we have a public hearing. First up is a public hearing to amend the Chatham zoning bylaw section two hundred, oh, two point two. Floodplain definition and update session six with the district with the current zoning bylaws is applied to the newest updated FEMA regulations. Pursuant to master law chapter forty-eight, section five, the Chatham Plan Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. in the planning board office in the George C. McKinstry Building. Thirty-seven Main Street, Chatham, Mass. Invite a Zoom proposal to amend the Chatham zoning bylaw by amending section two hundred dash two point two. Our floodplain definitions and update section six for plain district with the current zoning bylaws will be applied to the newest updated FEMA regulations. The complete text of the proposals available at the primary office in town clerks offering for public inspection during regular visit hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the zoning proposal could appear at the time and place designated. Excuse me. Your participation is C T P S colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S backslash two oh, two one one, two nine three, two two five seven, meeting ID three oh, one, two nine three, two two five seven. Phone access one six four six five five eight eight six five six. All right, in our packet, we have the, I take it as the current floodplain?
Yeah, the ones with this lined out are the definitions in our curve. Like being work on definitions and then the new definite definitions that are not lined out are the proposed changes as dealing with the match program management office. These are right out of the state model bylaws that's already been passed through state attorney general review and they said the simplest thing for us to do. Remove our definitions, replace them with the mass state definition, which are very similar. The only thing that they're really taking away is they don't like the idea of town moving special permits for structures in a floodway. So that's and they said we don't really have the authority to do that. That's the most major change. They would have to go through the variance process for structures within a floodway or floodplain area. That's the most significant change. A lot of the other stuff is just wording.
Now, who would that be variance be granted through?
What's that?
Wouldn't the various be granted through if they want to build something in the front?
Um, it would be grinch through the state.
Okay, the state.
Yeah, all right. They're kind of trying to take the authority away from the town and let the state be the creating authority to make sure that they believe whatever it is that's complying with what regulations and then it depends on what you're proposing to do or whether you actually need approval or not. Because there are some um, pre-existing uh structures where they may not need a variance to do work on the structure. It would definitely impede the floodway any more than what's already there. So it has loopholes to allow people to expand existing structures as long as they don't repeat the floodway more than it already was. One thing they've done with the town also is um is that we now have to have a designated well-organized ministry, which is going to be our conservation director. So and then the the bylaws are also updated to um based on the new FEMA maps and we'll be starting in July of this year. Why they were in a hurry to get this approved for um, the annual town meeting. So it would be done before July so that we would be in compliance from the get-go. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, so right now, basically, it's the board make a recommendation to you know, adopt the adopt the bylaw change for the floodplain definitions and then adopt the bylaw change to the floodplain district.
Are these definitions under floodplain exclusively? Are these part of the?
No, they're under, it has its own section.
Okay.
We have our own section of all our definitions and what means it's the only section.
Okay, do any of these in floodplain contradict any of ours or different than any of ours?
No, not as far as, no, nothing with the, so.
Well, I'm just looking at some of these, some of these, we have definitions in our um zoning for some of these and are they different than what's in here? Are they the same? Like we define recreational vehicle, though we.
Um, that I don't know. I don't know the answer to or off the top of my head.
Make it confusing.
Yeah, it may not match our current bylaw definition.
Well, then we should look at that to make sure that they they at least match or they they don't conflict with one or the other. Otherwise, it's going to get confusing.
Is is the cross the crossed out part is from our?
Yes.
So then it has RVs in there gone and it's the same.
Yeah, but no, this was out of the floodplain. This is, these are strictly floodplain definitions, not the standard definitions. Define everything else.
But these are in our bylaws right now.
Under floodplain.
Under floodplain. So they're not actually changing our V.
And so, yeah, I saw that. That kind of looks the same. Look, I'm just wondering if they're in there twice today. If any of the new ones in here, you know, conflict with any of the old definitions in the.
Yeah, it didn't have said what the current definition is to make sure they you're correct. That I didn't take into consideration.
Yeah. Plus.
Unless it makes sense, it would be too. But not sound right there. It's stated in the bylaw that these definitions are to be applied to what conditions only.
I I mean, that's one way of getting around it.
Yeah, but it's good to check.
It's good to check just to make sure maybe ours need to be updated to match theirs.
Yeah, I think that we did have to.
It looks like a lot of them are different. It's just the one that that struck me was was directly, I was surprised recreational vehicle was it next? I thought we had that find already.
I think so too, because I think it came up when we had it defined, didn't it?
Yeah, that's what I started to wonder, how did we define it? Did we define it that same way? Or if we changed it, if we changed it in ours, why didn't we change it with floodplain?
Right.
So that just made me think of that.
Yeah, good thinking.
And then the um, we're the chairman. So this is the proposed language change.
That we don't even get it yet.
In in that, I mean, it should be somewhere here, like shouldn't we call out what we call C F R part sixty dot three somewhere just to what play it just doesn't. Excellent call out the federal bylaws or laws. Maybe in the.
You know what you're saying? I don't know if it's necessary for this. It wasn't going about in the state model by law.
With now, really, is this section six right out of the state handbook?
Yeah.
Regulation.
Right, it's like word for word right out of the state.
Out of states.
Yeah, especially removing our section six, replacing it with theirs.
The state.
Which is actually pretty similar, but.
So can you just walk me through this? So it's the state?
The state.
State. Um, this day has gotten to the, the feds have established this area. The state says, we're going to take it out of the town's hands. We're gonna, we're want you to follow the state regulations. And that's what this is, what we're, what you can build, what can go there, what can drive there.
Essentially, that's what it is.
Then how does Angela get involved in that?
Well, Angela has to make a determination. We have to keep a record of any construction work or anything that's going on within our floodplain. Any work that is done, any violations that are occurred and a report has to get filed. So she just keeps a running track of what's going on, which I think according to Kurt Meskis, uh, we have nineteen properties that were actually developed that are, that have floodplain on the property or the buildings in the floodplains. So it's not a huge number. But uh, the new floodplain map, they changed that a little bit. So but Angel is going to be in charge of tracking it. So it could be any type of permit that has anything to do with floodplains on it. You're going to have to run it through Angela to see.
I'm not concerned about those two. I'm concerned about the the landowner. How does the
Right.
Know what's going to hit them when also they they have assumed that they're able to do something on the property. And now they're not able to. You have Angela and Kurt not going to be able.
Well, I mean, right now, a homeowner, if a landowner, if they want to build a structural floodplain, they have to go through the same process. It's just they won't do it at the town level. They'll do it at the state level. That's the difference now. They're trying to take the, they want to make the state wants to make sure it's done right.
So they would just refer them to the state.
Yeah, it's it's just basically taking the power away from the town to a who are variance or something and chipping it to the state. And they they don't want to leave the special permit option open anymore. They want it to be a straight variance. So you, you know, the property owners, you ask the state and say justify why they need to build in the floodplain. What there are um certain things that can be done if they comply with the floodplain regulations, you know, the clearance has to be so so many feet above the high bottom mark and everything. So there are ways to be done. They're not totally dead in the water. If they're wanting to do something in the floodplain area on their property, they did, the state's making it more difficult to do, to be honest with you. Now, they're going to have to go to the state instead of it being approved.
So they would have to go to the state for any modifications and get approved. And then Angela would watch them or.
Right, have keep track of what, yeah, what's being done. And she submits a report, basically.
But that's her level of involvement. It's not, it's not enforcement for, or is it enforcement?
Well, no, we don't, we're not really going to get to the enforcement part. We turn it over to the state. If somebody was doing something that we had no knowledge of and that it would be in the state's floodplain management office to enforce it. Yeah, we don't need more enforcement board.
No, definitely not.
So in in this letter from FEMA a couple of months or whatever ago, it has a bunch of addresses or lots in here. And they they use the language letter of map change action. I mean, is this physically a letter FEMA is sending to these people?
No, that's a, one of the processes you can go, you go for a letter of map, uh, a long line, a long line, which is a letter of map amending. You actually made the floodplain map to like, you believe portion of your property is shown to be in the floodplain, but it's not. I believe it's not. You have to have the engineering done and everything, submit it FEMA and see FEMA will either agree or disagree with you that that portion, because they can show your whole property in the floodplain, but in reality, your house is not, even though a part of your yard is. So that makes a huge difference on what you can and can't do or how. So this, yeah, this is just this different matters of how you handle it.
Yeah, because you mentioned that. I know there's a couple properties near on clinical lake that they had that in the property over through the product process. Hiring the engineer and she did this when they first came once, I think, uh, was it Katrina treated the whole FEMA thing? When Katrina happened, they did that. She hired the engineer and proved that it wasn't, uh, herpes was running. And then it alarmed me that herpes was still on there.
Yeah.
She called the check to be sure there was still.
Sometime, you know, you you're near the water, but you get a grade like this up to your house. So your house is deemed to be in the flood area. So, yeah, so it's worth doing, you know, yeah.
All right, any other questions from the board? I think that uh so check just needs to be made on those definitions.
Yeah, and I think it's whether we need to change ours to match theirs.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think this is okay the way it is. It's better check ours. Just make sure that we don't need to update any of ours to match theirs.
All right, let me just open it up to the public. Either on Zoom or here, president has any comments or questions as it pertains to this um the floodplain definitions and update section six of the floodplain district with the current zoning bylaw to be compliant with the new updated FEMA regulations. All right, here I'm seeing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion for the public hearing, second matter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Uh, we have a motion to make a recommendation to adopt the floodplain regulations that the state has to be adopted by the town.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the section six regulations and changing what we currently have in our zoning to match what we state as in their guidelines.
All right, all those in favor?
Don't play. I. It's not paid. I. I don't see a.
Ross, let's see. All right, seeing how it's twenty seventeen and I'm not public here is a seven twenty-one. Do that A and R.
Yeah.
On Hill Road.
For, yeah. The action is uh of dividing uh a lot of them. It's major hill road, hill road. Um, originally, he's shown that he's creating this new lot here. Um, I've discussed with him, he's creating a landlocked parcel back there. He's going to create the one new lot here and then merge the real lot with this lot, uh, three.
So he was right, so, yeah.
Yeah, so he's basically creating a a new lot right here where I think he wants to you know, I don't know if he's trying to put in a duplex or wants to do something with the property. So creating this one new lot and then the rest of this lot will be merged with block three, so that it doesn't create a real lot on it.
What's the zoning here?
Agricultural. All of it is.
Into a duplex and I don't think so. I told you.
We said the ruiz on the other side.
Okay, so we're the north side.
Oh, no, he's on the R forty side.
Okay, yeah, okay, that makes sense then.
Yeah. He's comfortable with it. Creating this new line that even in the balance of this lot, you can merge with this lot here so that he doesn't create a just one big real lot. He'll still have road bunch of town, Hill Road. You take everybody still trying to get houses off wherever they can in Cheltenham.
Not, they're not making them anymore.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no housing crisis in Cheltenham.
Any other questions from the board? All right, do we have a motion to approve the A and R on Hill Road?
Make a motion to approve the A and R on Hill Road.
Second? All second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 You the favorite copy sign too, or just the one?
Uh, that paper copy as well.
Yeah, it's certainly hot, but this can't go away. So just that weird.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Right. Next up, we have a continued public hearing for Z P Barry Development Company, LLC, special permanent application to construct free energy storage system on Larry's Way, the Sturridge Road and Griffin Road, uh, map twenty-seven blocks, three lots, two and three. And we have a packet, a grave review. Sepertains to this.
Uh, you give the latest plan with basically two lots being uh merged back together again.
Yeah.
Which they did with their subdivision approval.
Okay.
I don't see any other trends that any team, a new report from Kurt Metcalf, the original one that I had.
Did he look at the plan after they were merged back together or?
Yes, I gave him a copy of the plan. Now we see many comments.
I understand the letter as well on the back and email.
There's still some outstanding questions in there.
Oh, have you seen this email from Kurt?
Yes, yeah, I think I sent that along. Is that the one I sent along?
It just said the uh, request in the disinformation for the B E S S storage yard and last plans. On the showing the distance between the US foundations supporting the US.
That's good. That's good. That's on on the big sheet of the plan. Yeah, that was what that was, was showing the whole system.
Or just to be clear, this this um, this site is going to have, we're going to do the three, five megawatt storage systems. To be clear.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. With the um, special cases.
Yep.
And that's on one lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the special case is part of it is what encompasses it into the area of the lots.
Yeah.
So you have to have the required frontage area and setback stuff, like three lots combined in order to do that special cases part of the bylaw.
So I guess I mean, any other member can speak up. I'm just speaking, just I think that the board might feel comfortable if we get a legal opinion just to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's to be sure that we're
Yeah, I hear you.
The right way.
Yeah.
Um, anyone else on the board have an issue with that?
Through the chair, I think we um we got some counsel from uh David McKay back in November
Yeah.
twenty-two. He he kind of pointed out two of the big topics.
Yeah.
You know, combining um multiple uses on a single lot and then wiring in more than fifteen megawatts, you know, is that allowed for the bylaws? So I mean, he he addresses at least those two points.
Okay.
Or or started to, you know, give us some guidance on those.
So I think, yeah, just some official clarity clarity from.
Concept. I think Kurt's opinion a little bit conflicts with the the bylaw conflicts a little bit with what he's saying in that letter. So I think some clarity would be good.
Yes, absolutely. I guess for all parties.
I agree. Yeah, okay. All right. And what and what was Kurt's interpretation of the whole, give us the next news. I don't want to speak for him, but like my discussions with him is the special cases or are for I want to say for instances like this, but circumstance like this where you have one use, multiple structures, which is what this is, is a one use, multiple structure situation. Um, that the special case is part of the bylaw. If you have the required frontage and area for three lots, let's say if it's three uses, three lots, if it's two uses, two lots. Um, then that isn't allowed used through or I want to say allowed circumstance through that provision.
Right.
Of course, which was dated back to October when we first started talking about combining onto one parcel, versus spreading it out onto other parcels up there initially and before coming to you guys. So that's why wouldn't you spread it out on the different parts of? It just doesn't, it doesn't really make a difference whether it's all together or separate. It just makes sense for the property, right? So that's that. And I think that's why the provision was put in there is that it makes sense of the property and what in certain circumstances.
Or might financially be more expensive to spread this out than it would be to keep it together. So that's your incentive there?
It's, no, it's, I mean, with this circumstance, it's really I don't see it more cost prohibitive um to spread it out. It's just that the provisions there in the bylaws, that's what we're trying to utilize. Otherwise, this subdivision plan that we've done, would it, it need to be way more extensive than in the way that it is written now, we can do multiple things from the lot with a frontage that we have.
So is the, with three, these three five megawatt storage facilities and call it that.
Yeah.
Um nothing else could go on these three lots because that that takes up all the, so nothing else could could be used on these lots. These lots could not be used for anything else.
Correct.
Does the landowner know that?
Correct.
What's currently on, does it, does he have anything on these lots now?
I think he's got like a log way down area. And each screen's long.
Yeah, would that be a permitted use if these were, if these run there?
I think he's been. I think he's been, I think he's been permitted to have the wood recycling.
Okay.
But and they've always processed it, I think that Kurt will verify that.
So that would be a second use on these properties besides this, is that?
I don't know.
That's one thing that we should probably get canceled. Is it?
But even, even.
Doing this.
Even Kurt have a look at it as far as, far as that goes for those. Cause I think that this storage here is gonna probably pretty much go where the wood recycling area is, right?
Um, just to, towards the road a little bit more, so if, do you know where's um. The patch of pavement is there, that has, it has like a um, an oil separator, I think there.
Yeah.
As well, you know where I'm talking about? Maybe an old scale house or something, right behind that.
Okay.
Um, so that pad here, right? And then I think I catch me some things over here, oh no, there it is there, the manhole. So pretty much right behind that first corner of the pan.
Yeah.
And it's, it's. Amount of dirt right now, that's what it is, yeah.
But what, what's on all of the other parcels?
So those parcels that were broken up through this subdivision.
Yeah.
So those are, those are good, um, not, we're not proposing anything on those parcels.
Right.
So that was part of this whole process is separating those uses onto each individual parcel.
But nothing, or there, there could only be, this would take up the primary use for all of the parcels of the subdivision.
This would take up the.
Lot D.
For lot D.
Well, you're combining uh, three.
So lot D has a, had lot D has enough frontage and area space to be. Three lots under the special use, special condition or whatever.
Bill, I think what Tom again is on the last page of Kurt's email, the highlighted, that's what we get in the math as far as running square footage and that is a red. So, um.
Who's the chair?
Go right ahead, John.
It just. Again, like we already turned, peeling up, five, five megawatts, but well, I know it's. May three into one, fifteen megawatts are there, where we only wanted five megawatts. The limit, but I understand the math, how you. But the intent of our bylaw was to have five megawatts on one lot. Even though. That is one lot, but technically somehow it's gotten into three lots somehow. But.
So, I mean, the other option is divide that into three separate lots and put one on each, right, on each lot.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the intent of the bylaw.
Yeah.
I mean.
I guess just so we don't get ahead of ourselves, let's wait for that confirmation, I mean, that council is on the same page.
I, I think it's coming down the road. Actually, there was a couple of other items in the Gray's report that I'm. You see. Was it a recommendation having a. Remember gravel access road?
So yeah, I can touch on what's changed a little bit on the plan, right?
Go right in.
So since the last time we talked about this special permit application, we've since done the subdivision plan. So we implemented that onto the plan. Um, I've had extensive conversations with Captain Carlson and Kurt around all of this for six months. Um, so. We have coming in the existing roadway, um, our driveway will come up into here. Uh, these dotted, these hard dotted lines for access are the access into the site. Um, for personnel and for um. Fire as well. Um, if you look in the triangle between the two roadways, there's a squared dot with a, a note coming off of it. Coming, pointing to it, that note is specifying the location of the dry stand pipes. Um, that are being installed for their containers, um, in the event that the fire department ever needed to use them. Although guidance is to not use them right now. Um, that is a location that Kurt pointed on the map for me, I meant not Kurt, Dennis Carlson. I pointed, oh, that's been agreed upon up on this roadway here, safe distance away from north fence. Um, then off of. The first driveway, you see another little dotted line here coming up onto the side of the grass area. That is another fire access lane, um, for that, for an apparatus to be able to get up over that way. Um, and same with the one coming down from. Um, this is the same. Fire access road, um, and that's to satisfy the access around, um, part of. That bylaw, which was a. Agreement so far with the fire department, um, and myself.
And, and are those gonna be gravel?
Gravel, paved, gravel, gravel.
Gravel, and they're not there now, this is a new.
It's all gravel right now, but it, it'll be a defined area and it, there's a note on there to always have them maintained open as well.
So it's gonna go real this area. What were those trailers, I know? And what about the, the stand pipes you mentioned, uh, the current. Going forward strategy is not to use a stand pipe?
Guidance right now is to not use stand pipes, correct? Um, that is just based upon the most um. Recent testings, um, it's kind of been our guidance. From the start, but it's been more solidified more recently, um, through, we work with a company called Energies. Energy Safety Response Group, um, they're out of Ohio, E S R G. Um, they might have even provided a letter real early on in this application, which we can bring back up top, we need to talk about that as well. Um, but that guided, that was essentially like a guidance letter that I, I give to Captain Carlson to review. And with how the technology. That we're using, the chemistry of battery that we are using, um, our. Um, fire safety consultants are, are not recommending right now to hook up to, um. The dry stand pipes, dry stand pipes will have to be installed part of NFPA that the five. So they, the containers come pre-planned for this stuff. Sprinklers, everything, yep, so we are setting it up to satisfy eight fifty five.
Right.
And it's just a, it's just a recommendation and guidance upon ERP. Um, guidance could change, never, you never know, right? So the pipes are there to satisfy the, the need if ever needed.
So, what's the substitute for water?
Right now, uh, guidance right now is to let the energy burn out of itself, um, with the nine five forty A testing of these batteries. Um, they get, they get put through a abuse test, right? And that's what this company, E S R G, does on a daily basis, is they set fires to these things, so they'll take. They'll take a food probe, they'll put it. On. One of these modules down here, on a specific cell inside that module. And they'll heat that up until it goes into a thermal runaway. And when that does, that's when they, they measure how, what the propagation of the, the thermal runaway is. Um, and right now, with the L F P, they haven't seen it leave four cells, let alone one module. So it's, that's guidance right now, safety wise, um. For everybody is to let it burn and to kind of surround, protect your surrounding exposures, um, and any kind of smoke plume that might be there to. With a fog pattern, so that's.
Is, is there still the liquid cooling unit is in the container?
The liquid cooling unit is in the container, correct, and there's a.
But that's not fire suppression, it's just the operating cooling.
Correct, yeah, that's like car engine temperature maintaining, um, underneath. The, this whole floor pan has a subcatchment. So there is a safety net for catching coolant if there ever was a spill, or if there was a fire and it all leaked out, right? Um, the pan underneath holds like two hundred and forty three percent of the forty three gallons of coolant.
I mean, what if, what if you had two cells concurrently getting runaway? And then it's uncontrollable, I mean, if they're testing, there's a, a case or a scenario with one thermal runaway. It's contained to four, but if you have two, it's probably not.
Probably never, ever happening simultaneously, through the group history of research of testings. As well as actual real life circumstances, um, typically things of. Um, like an electrical short could happen, that doesn't happen all over the place inside the system, that would be a one particular one. But the way that these systems are set up with the battery management systems. Um, they can detect faults, currents, voltages, uh, they track the state of charge of the batteries. Each individual module cell, um, they track the health of the battery, they track, um. The fault, like I said, the faults as well, and that all, that's on a three level system, so they're individual three level systems. So if one was at fault, another one can pick it up on certain levels, um, so there's a, there's a module level. But individual module, there's eight in the rack, I call this a rack, um. Then there's a rack level, and then there's the cellular level as well, and then there's the whole management system that manages the entire box. So it's, that battery management system is your fire prevention. Um, and that's, that's the way the industry has developed as far as fire. Prevention, um, is your, your number one fire prevention is your battery management system.
Do most of a reach thermal runaway about the same length of time, no matter what brand or type you're using?
So there's, yeah, that, it varies very much so, depending, depending on the quality of the battery, right? Um, so the ones that we've had, we, there's two manufacturers, B Y D and C A T L. Um, they're the two biggest, they're U L certifications and all that stuff. That all, all this system has to pass a onsite U L nine five forty test as well. Where Sun Girl, the manufacturer, would come out and assess the system as a whole. So that has to, the whole system as a whole has to have a U L cert. So with that comes all of your regulations on types of batteries you can use and the safety nets that have to be provided.
How many racks per container, racks of?
Uh, so there's three here, and there's three here, so six total. Yo, um, each, each container holds roughly point six megawatts. So the, the nice. Way that the industry's going in a way of separating power and creating more safety. Um, so we, you've seen batteries implemented in the field here already through development that we've done. Um, and those batteries. There are in one big container, right? They have gas compression because they are in a big container, they have a lot of airspace, so they have a gas. Um, is there's a more ability to hit that lower limit with so much airspace. Um, so these new containers separate the power, um, down into smaller blocks to keep it all away from each other. So that if an event was to happen and it was to go through another module, it wouldn't spread to, at the whole system, right? So. This first door is your cooling unit, um, and a couple other controls. Then your next three doors, uh, and from that, there's a two hour fire rating wall. Then your three racks, and then another firewall, then your DC DC converters and another firewall. So you have two containment areas. For the energy, so you have a quarter megawatt here, quarter megawatt here for your containment and for your fire safety and separation of power. So. The energy, the, the, the field has advanced quite a bit from your older style containers, H V A C systems that are cooling them. Um, they're a lot, these are a lot quieter with the way that these have the pumps, um, with the condensers. Um.
So it's a half a megawatt per trailer per unit?
Roughly.
Yeah, roughly.
Point six.
Go right ahead, John.
I mean, now that you're, is there any consideration of? Any P F O ways or anything, putting these fires out, probably contain the runoff from this? What, what's the base, what's the structure of the material underneath these, is it stone, is it pavement? Is it, it doesn't show on the plan what that area inside the. The, inside the compound, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, it's crushed stone.
Uh, there should be a detail on this. Oh, we have only three hundred, we have crushed stone, each trench.
I'm just going off the pains I have.
Yeah, it should be the same as what I have.
Should, there's no detail of what's inside that.
Well, because the shore that back. It is, but it is, it is crushed stone. Um, it's a gravel, it's a stone base. Probably a two inch.
But is it only continual pad on all these, are there individual?
Individual paths, correct.
Between that, all that area is crushed stone there?
Correct, curse, yeah, probably two inches. Um.
So probably, is there anything underneath it, but is there?
Anything.
I mean, what's the preparation of the area underneath the?
Gravel base.
Gravel base.
Go big. Still a recharge trench along this whole edge here for general stormwater runoff.
Little light on the details on what's inside that.
If there's things that you want to see, please, I'd be happy to add them to plans as far as details, um, but. This next, this, yeah, this next goal, I can even show that on.
Me and Jay speaking. Uh, there's a lot of concern about, not only that. If the fire was to happen and there was low, low chance of, I understand. It's good science inside them, but what happens when you go to put it out? And then the chemicals get mixed and the chemicals run off the site. And then there was already a, a pretty substantial legal. Of stuff that went into the book up there. Just to, and now that you're concentrating all this material onto one site. There could be ramifications on how to handle a fire and what to do with the runoff. Not the fire per se, we don't really care the fire, the tanks will burn out. But which, where does that chemical go once it's?
I can answer it. I can, I can do my best to answer your question or statement there, um, so. When. A system is to go on fire, say the system's on fire, normal operations. For, for guidance right now from our consultants, let the energy burn out, we're surrounding exposures, so now you're not. Putting water onto the batteries, you're not introducing water to those chemicals, those chemicals are being consumed by the fire. Um, so that is the mindset around letting it burn as well, um, but I can tell you on the flip side of it. E S R G does testing daily, like I said, um, on this stuff, and they are required at the facility to catch all of their firewater runoff and test it. Um, I forget what county they're in out there, but the, the county makes them keep it and test it, and they used to have to bring it offsite. Uh, to a specific disposal place that cleans it, however that happens. Um, with the more recent testing over the last four months that they've been doing, they can now dump it in the city drain. So the firewater runoff is not of concern right now, there's not a lot of. Documented parts of that, but Nick. It's under, it's all proprietary testing right now, um, so there's only so much that can be given out as far as information on that right now. Um, but from our conversations most recently with the fire department up in Orange, we've been discussing the same thing. And, um, my most recent conversation with Nick was that they're dumping, they're allowed to dump it into the sewer drain. Or, or the sewer plant, sorry.
You're not required to put it in some type of containment system like such, like a gas station has to. It's with containment, you know, if you have a spill at a pump, at the pump's now, they have to put it containment area. You don't, you're not required to do that.
There's nothing, there's nothing showing the need of it either, um, and we, I, I work with the S R G very closely on like a lot of these projects. And that's been the standard, um, kind of. Suggestions as far as how things should go. And they're the leaders in the country on this stuff, these guys, these guys are doing research for the, um, energy, the every.
I think the, you know, should the board approve the application having that type of documentation? Do they provide anything?
I certainly, I can certainly have Nick address some things.
Record of it, you know, for anybody that may be concerned.
Yeah.
It might be useful to have it.
Um. If, I mean, John, um, you had mentioned. Labels. Are there certain ones that you would like to?
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not mentioning labels, I just, just. Any of these, that there has been a concern in passing other towns with the runoff from a, you know, for a situation. Maybe three towns over from here, that, uh, uh, containment barrier was put underneath that. To capture any of that concerns with an air capability to, to pump it out too, so. Um, and this, and that was. Um and this, and that was. That was one small barrier, because it not, I mean, in the, that was a.
And it could very well have to do with the chemistry of the battery in the, in the, in. The chemicals, for lack of a better word, the elements that are used in those, so these are lithium iron phosphate. Um and kind of what I just iterated is the research behind lithium iron phosphate. Um so I'm not speaking about like all lithium ion batteries, all of them should be treated differently. Um nickel, manganese, cobalt, for instance, heavy metals. Yes, I'd want a bladder underneath that as well, um so that's kind of like the circumstances that come into play when we're talking through. Requirements as far as catchment, that's typically where those. Um discussions come in as part of chemistry of the batteries.
So what are the prices for these different tech technology batteries, and you know, what you're using, more the cheapest, more expensive, or?
These are very expensive.
Very expensive, yeah. So it's, it's the ones that you worry about are are the cheaper.
It's, and it's not necessarily that they're cheaper, it's just a different energy density. Um it's different safety, uh readily available elements um that do ultimately create a cheaper product, right? Um but these lithium iron phosphates, um China, um everywhere overseas has gone predominantly only to lithium iron phosphate. And they've gotten rid of the heavy metal, um nickel, manganese, cobalt chemistries as far as implementing in the future. Um so they're kind of, and it depends on the developer, it depends on their source, depends on. The company that they're working with and who they're getting their stuff from, what manufacturer. Um this manufacturer is well known and they have. Oh, they had a hundred megawatt or two hundred megawatt site that they just installed recently in the States. Can't quote me on the state right now, but I feel like it was New York. Um Sungrow's been moving a lot of energy storage um to the states over the last few years.
Yeah, goodness, manufacturer?
Sungrow Manufacturing, yep, and these are power Titan models. Uh power Titan energy storage is what they you would find.
How long do they usually last?
Uh depends on the usage, um twenty to thirty years as far as battery technology. Um but again, if you're charging and discharging at fast rates, that dimensions. Um the way that these are regulated through National Grid, um through the. Um like some in England, uh they can only charge and discharge at a minimal rate. Um they trickle charge and they pretty much trickle out, um for the, the amount that's here. It's not like your typical solar field with sun pounding all day, the inverters are like ree all day, it's, you don't get that noise from these, the way that these operate.
Um and and the. If there was a problem with them or at some point in the future, could they be replaced with a different type? I would imagine that's yes.
Uh yes, back to you guys for the modification or application for that, right? Um yeah.
That's the type of battery that will always remain in this location, that could be actually. It would be something else.
As as technology changes, it could be, but that would be an application back in front of you for more situations that to talk about, yeah, for sure. Um these do come, these containers come fully assembled, um and they come fully wired. They get brought in on a truck, they get craned onto the, onto the pads. Um so no handling of batteries on the site ever, um they. The manufacturer will come out, they'll torque down all that stuff again, they'll check all the specs, and they do the wiring, each container is about a day to install. Um so it's, it's pretty unique the way that these systems are becoming now, um separation of power. The ability to have it all in one box, a purpose built box with certain um safety nets in. Inside of it or the container that it actually is. Um no buildup of gases, it has gas sensors as well, but they don't build up gas on the normal operation. But if there was an electrical door and it was smoldering, it would catch it.
How much does a container weigh?
Container weighs about sixty two, fifty eight thousand pounds.
And I've got a, I don't know if this is still valid, so.
I think.
Is it still the R two thirty one battery rack?
That might not be the same since October. That is not the same since October, I can get.
Different container.
No, same container, different rack, so this is an air cooled rack, not a liquid cooled rack. What I'll do is I'll get you guys a full stack of updated docs, because it has been a while, then things have changed, yeah.
Twice as many megawatts.
Yep, yep, exactly, yeah, right.
Batteries don't have the same limitations that are so good, like we have a couple that are. Not generating yet, because the grid can't handle it, the batteries are actually helping the grid, aren't they?
That is the point of these projects, yeah, and especially in this here, this whole central mass area is inundated with solar. And the three phase lines can't handle new interconnects like Amazon. Right, so when you, when you have a thirteen eight line, so you can put ten megawatts on it, you have eight megawatts worth of solar. Right now, the way that it's working in the grid with National Grid is they're looking at us as a generator. Um or have been through all of our studies, they have been looking at us as a generator, so they wouldn't. In order to connect certain projects like these ones in town, we'd have to do infrastructure upgrades, which is the total opposite of what the point of these batteries is. So we are working very closely with National Grid on select projects, on um implementing um a system to. Monitor the solar and batteries and all renewable energy resources, so that they can autonomously operate. Um and allowed to operate within certain parameters, they're heavily regulated through National Grid. Yeah, but the point is to to make a belly in the system, right? So you have more capacity and you have more energy on demand as well.
What's the threshold for you to be considered a generator or a power plant?
Anything if you're putting it back to the grid.
I mean, at what? What, what's the state regular, state citing body for power?
Oh, so the Energy Siting Board?
Energy Siting.
Energy Siting Board, in order to go in front of them, you have to be a hundred megawatts.
Hundred megawatts.
So in order to circumvent a situation like a town process, you'd have to be, like, there's people out there trying to do that, right? So there's a Carver project, um not that they're trying to circumvent anything, it's just the proper way to go about the application of such a large scale.
Yeah.
Um but there's one in Carver, I think that's a hundred, or it might even be increased to a hundred and fifty now. Um and then there was a company trying to push one through in Medway as well. Um and Medway had a, a lot of reports done from an outside consultant. Which if you go to the Medway website, underneath their permitting part of their stuff, they'll still have that up there, great information. Arab, the Arab company did a great report, um and I think you'd find a lot of the similar information in our packets that we have here. It was just a good report because it's not, not many, not many large reports out there for this stuff, right, in the state? So it was, it was nice to see.
Would they use in the Sungrow containers?
That site is not, I don't believe, no, they were actually looking at stacking the batteries at one point in time, putting them up on top of each other, which.
All right, when you go, do you know before, it's like the heaps stacked in there or anything or?
Uh in megawatt size?
Yeah, or stacking, I mean.
Stacking, I would never recognize. Yeah, that's just a fire hazard waiting to happen, if you have a fire down below, right, it's going up top. To me, it doesn't make sense, but that was a proposed system at some point in time in the state, um but technically advised against. Was there anything else from the board?
So you didn't locate any of the drainage features on Larry's way right now?
Jeremy needs to get out there to do that, and I, yeah, and so I was gonna run through a couple of things, um if I may. Go ahead. So we have a couple of things to address on the Graves review. Um to include the drain water, drainage, um stormwater drain pipe, um as well. Was a construction detail um for. Sign. For the sign, yeah. For the sign for the gate, uh so like your solar field gates, uh there just wasn't until added on the last page.
Can you see this site from off the property? From the same center, or no, see when it goes up?
I don't believe, I honestly, I've never driven up Sullivan, but I don't believe so, because I can't see nothing through the woods. Yeah.
It's up here.
I don't think.
Get a chair. Right, I got some type of detail on that French drain running around, I know. It had some orange there, which I can't. Just have detail on the.
Yeah, yeah. So gravel, no. ESRG letter, French drain.
Detail. And how well what's going on between the pads of the most.
Yeah, as far as like a label for what's there.
Although what kind of, what is it crushed down?
Yeah, yes, yeah, correct.
Was it the fabric underneath it, so nothing's grown up all over it?
Yeah, that's exactly what happened, yeah. All right, anything else from the board? You can think of right now, with that one of them. There's some public con uh questions. Um do you have anything else?
I think I am good.
Okay, all right. Uh Lori, I see you have a couple of questions, um it's pertaining to the three lots of you of use on. On one, because we just talked about lot D. I think Kirk was going by.
I believe.
Section two hundred dash three, dash three, thing. So. And I think, um.
So, so I was wondering about the, um Kurt said there's sufficient frontage for three lots. And when you drive in on the left hand side, there is a use already, Larry's got the uh the screening pile on the left or a stockpile.
Yep.
Um so, so I guess this would be a question maybe for attorney McKay. If you are indeed allowing the use of three lots onto the one acre they're leasing. Does it then render the other two unusable and do they have to put a note in the file? Um since Larry's already using one lot, at least from what I see from the road. He would have to render that, move it if he's gonna utilize that use, that's my assumption. And it would be good if we had either Larry present or. Maybe a written letter stating he understands that if McKay does state that the. Use of three of lots onto one renders the other two unusable. Then I would like to think that Larry would not be okay with that, so without him. There or writing something.
Yeah, so the question is, it's more three uses on that one lot D, right?
Well, yes, and since Larry is already utilizing at least the lot on the left.
But that is.
That is lot D, Lori.
So you have that, he's not utilizing D?
So he is utilizing the, yes, but that, that is the lot that's proposed for these.
Concern is, does he realize that he's not gonna be allowed to do anything with the rest of the property? To these batteries?
The other ones.
It's a big lot of land, so it means the rest of the property is gonna be rendered useless, even though zero points ordered. Am I correct in saying that? I don't, that might understand me what you're saying.
So Larry, Larry can't pick up and move over to one of these other lots and continue his process, because.
Right, once he's allowed the barriers to be there, even though they're only taking up a small portion. The whole rest of the lot to Larry is gonna be useless.
So it's about ten acres. Lots about ten acres, and you're leasing one acre of that, or you're leasing a whole ten acres?
About a, roughly an acre.
Okay, so, so the lot's ten acres, you're using an acre, so you've got nine acres there that.
He can't do.
Well, theoretically.
He can use, but he can't have operations. He can store things, he can, he can't have operations through. We can get clarification from.
That's what I think we need to do, because, yeah, I mean, he also does say here that any further additional uses on this lot will need to be evaluated. Or implies the funded area requirements for each additional use, so.
Correct.
That, that's my main concern, is if Larry is aware, and then is there gonna be any pin placement? Because as you know, people retire, boards change, just to prevent issues down the road. I know you, you approved the site plan or the subdivision plan last week. Or last meeting.
Property pins. Property pins to mark up the lots, that generally.
Yeah, because then whoever goes in to inspect is gonna be pretty clear if those are properly marked, that somebody's encroaching somewhere where they shouldn't be. Or they need to lease more than an acre from Larry. And then I guess my last thing is. Again, I'm, I'm pushing this, but it would be great if it was in a motion that. Based on this history of missing decommissioning bonds, it would be great if you could make it part of the motion, so you can enforce it. That the decommissioning bond be in place prior to Kurt issuing the building permit. Because you can't chase after these people, especially if, if leases get sold.
You know, applied to this facility, which would be exactly that. It says how much has to be done and there be applied for the issuance of building permits. Correct, so yes, that would be done.
That would be helpful, because as we know, it falls through the cracks, so. Especially with the renewals.
Are we caught up on the rest now, do you know?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you here?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to say I just prefer to see the decision in writing before we vote on it. You see, like, you know, we've always gone by and say, oh, yeah, and this and this and this and this, and if something gets missed, it gets missed and we don't find out about it. Yeah. Further down the road, so if we can, I know, that's my feeling moving forward on any decisions. To have a written decision in front of the board prior to voting to approve, it's just, yeah, I think it.
Despite that saves everybody.
Yeah.
Or, or before it gets sent to the clerk, and I don't think that legally we can have a decision right before the vote is done. Or the law, so.
Well, we can.
Get my, I just want to follow.
So. We can have a decision written that we vote on, so we can, we can, we can discuss and, you know, kind of. Kind of discuss what, what we'd like to see in the, the, the agreement.
Awardage.
Okay, awardage, and then we can bring it up in the, the meeting, so I mean, if you want to put something together.
Yeah, yeah.
Prior, that kind of suits the purpose, we can make, we can make additions or subtractions.
It's a lot easier.
At the minute, but at least it's, it's in front of us, we see it, we can copy on it, we change this to this, we change that to that. So a draft, prior to making it, that's of all the conditions, of all the conditions. And kind of use it as, as the criteria moving forward on, on basically to be approved, that's, that's my feeling.
All right, yeah, great idea.
All right.
Go ahead, Tom. Question for Randy, do we have a co, do you have a copy at some point in time this week, maybe, of what that decommissioning stuff just spells out? Can't seem to find it on the.
Oh, yeah, you.
So if.
You need a copy of the frame board, decommission.
Yep, yep, that's all. I, it's hard to find on the.
It's a policy frame board adopted for all decommissioned.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, I was looking for it last week. I give a motion to continue the public here.
To, uh, with April.
To, uh, April fifth. At, uh, seven thirty.
Um actually, can I look at that real fast? I'm just worried about, oh, um. Well, actually, it's a question for John, do you think the borderway subdivision is gonna be ready for that meeting?
Porterway subdivision I have being printed today, so it's coming to you tomorrow.
Okay, so you're gonna, I'm, I'm looking at the timing, so we're not like.
Yeah, so Graves and yourself will have Porter's Way revision tomorrow. Um so April fifth, we should be okay.
Okay.
For, for the subdivision.
I just didn't want us to be sitting around that.
Yeah, we continue the special permit further out, right?
What's that?
We continue that special permit further out, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Seven thirty on that day, Randy?
Yeah. Can you make a motion that we, uh, continue the Larry's Way, uh subdivision, uh sorry, special? I can make a motion that we, uh, continue the Larry's Way, uh, subdivision, sorry, special cycling, cycling. And special permit. Uh, to April fourth, uh, it's April fifth at seven thirty P M.
Second that.
All those in favor?
I, I, I.
Hi, thanks.
I'll leave that mail that over to tomorrow.
I'll actually be by the office, Jane tomorrow, obviously. Oh, you got it, huh? Okay.
All right, in our packet, we have the, uh, decision for the Kent Johnson site plan modification decision.
Yeah, there was, um, some typos and actually do. Incorrect address between, uh, between Jane and Jean. They went through like, uh, got all the typos and everything, so now I'm just making sure that the content. Is everything's in there that the board was planning on. I tried to be. As specifically as possible based on what they, the information they provided during the public hearing, so. It's clear, so.
Yeah, you did a good job. If there was a lot there, after the most important one, I think we were going for is number twelve, any. Changes in use, you know.
Yes.
Perfect.
And this is kind of what you're recommending, Don, you have this before.
Right, well, I mean, I'll, I'll. Do I do that, so you have it before the meeting, so you know, sit here trying to read it the last second. That puts you under the gun and not be able to have a chance to give it a good review.
That's out of the bar already when we approve it, so.
Did they request a pre-concussion meeting?
No, they, Mike, Mike, Mike knows that, um, dealing with this and he's waiting, so. And who they will soon after.
I think this is gonna be test pits for the infiltrative basis.
So, I mean. You already voted, you know, to approve the applications, so I don't know. You just need a consensus that you're satisfied with the decision.
Wow, that's right.
Been, been writing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice job, Ross.
No problem. I did the word speak.
Right.
And chat G N T wrote this up.
So it says right here, I'm coming.
All the way.
Yeah, man.
Yeah, I don't, I, I can't think of anything that you missed here, so I think we're okay to.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with supplying the board with a grant, you know, so there. Yeah, you know, shovel such a by, so nothing gets overlooked.
And, and we say things in, in weeks prior, like, oh, make sure that's a, and then it just.
Everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
Or get something or.
All right, then on the April fifth meeting, are you, you guys down for another six o'clock executive session to talk about legal stuff?
Yeah, Dave McKay has reached out to give us an update on podcasts. And also you, give us an update on B G G at the same time. So we'll start at six o'clock, executive session like we did before. And afterward, go straight to the regular meeting.
April fifth.
Um, do, do we want to get, do we want to discuss? The Larry's Way plan too, or?
That while we're discussing, I'm gonna add it on to the executive sessions, just in case, that's why we're gonna talk about.
Now, like I said, the other question is, does that need to be on the executive session or can we talk about that after the executive session? Because it, it's really not executive session material. Um, that's probably more of a public discussion, so we can do the executive session. And then come out of executive session and talk about Larry's Way and, and this property.
And we do that, yes.
I don't think it falls under.
No, yeah, it's not litigation.
Yeah, I'd hate to get somebody going.
It's straight legal.
Yep, yep, yeah. So see if you can stick around and maybe put that on at, at come seven to seven fifteen or something. We can push some of this other stuff out or something, make sure we go over.
Is there anything else for anything that you have that came up?
Uh. No, I see at the moment.
Anyone have anything else? If not, motion to adjourn.
Uh, the big motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Uh, I, I.
Hey, I.
All right, have a good one, Lori.